Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Yukon Planning Commission for this month. First item will be our flag salute led by Commissioner Beaver and our invocation led by Commissioner Davis. Would you all please stand and join us?
Father God, we thank you so much for all your blessings, for guiding us through our chores as we do them during the day. And Lord, we pray that we can make the right decisions on the things that come before us tonight. Also want to pray for our police officers and soldiers and all the civil servants in harm way with everything that's going on in the United States and in the world, Lord. In the name of Lord Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call the roll, please.
Chairman Taylor.
Here.
Vice Chair Doggett.
Here.
Commissioner Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Smystarla.
Here.
And Commissioner Beaver.
Here.
Item one is approval of the minutes of the April 8th meeting. Do we have any corrections or do we hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the minutes of last meeting.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion or any questions? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Beaver.
Yes.
Commissioner Smystarla.
Yes.
Commissioner Davis.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Doggett.
Yes.
Chairman Taylor.
Yes. Item two will be visitor's section. If there's anyone here present tonight that would like to address the commission on about something that is not an agended item, you'd step to the microphone at this time and state your name. Seeing none, we will proceed. Item three, to hear a request by Ramsey and Tharp Attorneys at Law on behalf of Native Warehousing LLC to rezone from C3 Restricted Commercial District to I-1 Light Industrial District, Lot 4 and 5, Block 1 of Westport Commercial Park located at 1516 Commerce Street. Is there someone here that'd like to address that to us?
Mr. Chairman, my name is George Ramey and we have filed in behalf of Nady. The, Don Dillingham, the manager and owner of the company is here, sitting on the front first row. We are asking that the rezoning from Commercial to I-1 be approved. We have reviewed the staff's report. We concur in that. And the intention is to build a warehouse. I believe the application provided for a request at 25,000 square foot, but it looks like it'd be a 20,000 square foot warehouse. And for the same type of use of all of the buildings that are there and adjacent to this property. There's A&amp;A Transmission, National Oilwell. That is one tenant that we are soliciting at this time. We understand they're looking for more space and that is a tenant that would be highly sought after. But that type of a tenant is, if they're not available. Swan's is there, Yukon Door and Plywood, further on west. And we think that the use that we're requesting is what's already out there and would respectfully ask you all to approve that. If you have any questions for us or for Mr. Dillingham, we'd be glad to take those questions. I'd like to give you this color photo, an aerial photo. It shows the little bit different look than what you have with your papers, I believe. I know you're all very familiar with this area, but our land is abutting. These other items that are basically warehouses and same use is what we're proposing.
Okay. Why are we wanting a rezoning? Is there some reason it can't go into C3 or?
All of the uses within the I-1 is what we're requesting, but our intentions are for warehousing of oil and gas supply, distribution, supply.
So it's just-
And that's one of the request, that's one of the permitted uses.
So it's just a general warehouse that you're building and you're going to lease it out?
Correct.
Any commissioners have questions? Mr. Ramey?
But do we know what's going to go in there?
Well, it's not built. No, we don't have a guarantee, but we're soliciting that one company, National Oilwell, which it just abuts our property doing the same thing and that's the type of tenant we're looking for.
And what does National Oilwell do?
It's a distribution supply, oilfield equipment.
So you like heavy equipment and pipes or that kind of stuff?
Well, there's no pipe yard on their facility and there's no heavy equipment on their facility. Right across the street on Vandamit, Coughlin's, which was a heavy oil and gas distribution work area. You know, he's got large tanks and five buildings on his place that looks like they do some manufacturing and he does sell pipe.
So this is going to be storage, basically, or sales or?
Not necessarily. Sales, distribution and supplies, but you would be storing them.
That's pretty broad. You can do anything from can of oil to heavy equipments.
Well, and I-1 provides for that and that's what's already out there. The Yukon Door and Plywood, which is just west of us, they're heavy manufacturing. They've got huge vacuum machine on the back of their buildings for their heavy manufacturing of wood products. I was out there today and the doors are open and sawdust is drifting out through the air. But this is not that type of an operation.
It's, I'm assuming that most of the people here are concerned about this rezoning. Have you all visited with the Westport group?
With some, not anybody from West, other than, I don't know if you call your addition, Mr. Nail. I know where we visited with him and I don't know if that's called Westport where he's living. Yeah, I did think it was Westport, Stone Creek. Westport's on further north.
Yeah. Okay.
I think Mrs. Cunningham is here and she lives, I don't know if it's called Westport, but she lives north of the facility. For your information, my client owns the property right across the street north. And it's commercial and he's not asking, nor would ask for that to be changed. And there's buffer to the north with that one and a half story building. That is the, Em's in and a gas lift operation is in.
Where's the workout building?
It just abuts it to the east.
To the east.
Would you like me to point it out on that picture? You can see it very easily. Rectangular building running north and south.
Yeah, it's on the corner there.
Yes.
Okay.
And it's the screen to the east and the one and a half story building on across the street is the screen to the north.
Okay, to have discussion from the audience, we really need to get a motion on the floor. And then I will ask for discussion from, if anybody has anybody, anything they want to say about it. Do we have a motion?
Just one other thing. I don't know if this paperwork that we have is anything, but on the comprehensive plan number two, it says King Gate Development. Isn't this Westport? It's the last sentence in item number two.
Yeah, read the paragraph.
First paragraph.
It's actually Westport Commerce Park, but I'm looking where.
Item number two, first paragraph at the bottom. Last sentence.
Westport.
Mine says King's Gate Development.
That's just an error in it.
Okay. Well, I figured that, but I didn't know if it's something-
To the north would be Westport West, yes.
Need to be corrected or not?
Okay. To move this along, we need to have a motion on the floor and then we can ask for discussion from the audience. Do we have a motion? You want to hear it before you make a motion? All right, we'll go that way. Is there anyone else that'd like to, yes, sir, Mr. Nail?
John Nail, 901 Stone Creek Boulevard. I live in Stone Creek. I'm also the developer of Stone Creek. I wasn't involved in the business of developing when that subdivision and that commerce area were platted and planned out. And how they planned it out was, any of you that have been through there, they have those duplexes when you first pull in, kind of for a multifamily. Then they had the residential loan back, further back in there. And then we're bodybuilders now, fit, what's the name of it now? Yukon Fitness. They're having that light commercial and then much further west, they have the industrial, have that buffer there. I know, I've lived there and been a part of that area for about nine years. And that Westport Boulevard, which comes off of Vandamit, is used for residential traffic.
Yes.
And that's, I believe, how it was designed, was for residential traffic. And you have families, kids, people walking in the evenings, cars leaving Westport, cars leaving Stone Creek. So that is used for a residential street. And the industrial, which is where Yukon Door and Plywood is, that's much further to the west and that traffic doesn't come our way. That traffic goes out to Vandamit and then east or west, mainly east. And so what my big time concerns are, we're going to have an industrial zoning there. And I don't know if, I'm sure you guys have seen this, what you can do with industrial zoning. There are several things there. It's pretty amazing. Right next to a residential subdivision and I think just as importantly, residential traffic. And I've been around businesses long enough. And by the way, I'm very pro-business, but I know what street they're going to take to get there. Probably as much as the street in front of Yukon Door and Plywood, they're going to turn on Westport Boulevard with the wolf field traffic. And I don't believe that's how that area was conceived to bear the burden of commercial traffic with your residential traffic and your residential pedestrians walking and enjoying that.
Well, just to play a devil's advocate here, there is industrial already in there. It's just a little bit, and there's this, there is another street that could be used to get in. Now, what type of traffic, Mr. Ramey, do you expect? I mean, are we looking at trucks? Got to hear it from people at home.
I can't guess about traffic, but there is, the same street goes all the way and makes a U in two places on Vandamit. But our property abuts industrial on the west side all the way. And it even touched, all that industrial, it already zoned and touches it.
And I don't, and I don't dispute that. It does touch that, but that traffic, that's why that was zoned further west to go out the other street. You're going to bring that heavy commercial, I believe, Wolf Field's heavy to me, right next to the residential area with residential traffic and residential pedestrians. 25 mile an hour residential street. All the Westport group and the Stone Creek group takes that to their, to their home. And even though Danny Coughlin has some commercial heavy, but it's across the street and further west. That, there's no industrial traffic that comes down Westport Boulevard. But when you, warehouse is allowed, there will be industrial traffic coming north on Westport Boulevard. And anybody that has a home that's worth anything to them, I don't think they would want that. First of all, for devalue their property, but I'm talking about a safety issue. I've been around there for 10 years and that's a residential street. And you're going to, even though, even though what they're trying to apply for abuts industrial, that is, that is, that is commercial for that reason. In my opinion, that's how it was designed. And so, two reasons. Number one is safety, without question in my mind. And number two is there's no question it's going to devalue the property. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Someone else like to have a different point? Yes, sir.
I'm Coy Sullivan. I live at 1600 Churchill Road. My property backs up to the property that you are talking about across the street north of what you're trying to get resolved. We moved here in 1993. Spent, what for us was a considerable amount of money on the home that we got Tim Smith to build. At that time, there was a fitness center there. There was a counseling center on the corner. And we were told that that same type of businesses would be in that area. I believe to rezone this would greatly increase the noise that we were exposed to. I can tell you that even though Yukon Mill and Plywood, is that what it's spelled? Even though it's to the west of us, we get a lot of noise from that that we don't want. I would not want to move that noise closer to our house. When we bought our property, it was zoned commercial. We think it would devalue that property for Yukon to change that zoning. So I respectfully request that you keep it commercial.
There's a lot of commercial places that are very noisy, too. I fought this battle once when we were putting in Homeland up on 10th Street. People were worried about their property and that's your right to worry about your property. Anybody else have a different point they want to bring up? Yes, sir.
My name is John Kelly and I live in Stone Creek with John Nail. I've served on the committee just like you guys have in El Reno and I've been through all this. So I know the dilemmas that you're going through. I think one of the things that bothers us all is that there's a huge ambiguity, ambiguity to what he wants to do. And I don't think any of us are against, if there was a finite plan, this is where the doors are going to be. This is where we're going to have the entrance and things like that. But that's not, that's not being stated, that's not even being proposed. And what's going to be stored there? I think a simplistic workaround would be, you know, come up with some plans and then ask for a variance from the commercial. Because if you're asking for a variance from a commercial standpoint, just a variance in the commercial code, then at that point in time, you know that it's not going to be a heavier light industrial process. It's going to be more in keeping with what the original intent of the property was, which is, you know, quite important to all of us who have very nice homes. And I think that one of the things that attracted us to move here to Yukon was the fact that that particular area, that neighborhood, Westport and John Nail's new neighborhood, have very, very stable resale values. And that is a huge importance. And most of the areas in Yukon do. And I'm, I'm like you, all right? You know, you, there is definitely going to be something that goes in there someday. I'm not trying to deny that. What I'm more concerned about is what goes in there and how it's controlled. I think that commercial absolutely has a tight enough grip on it that it keeps the community into a state that it's nice and comfortable and it makes it still residential where we are. Light commercial could do that and it could do a whole lot to the opposite. So that's why I say maybe ask for variances. It's just a-
Thank you. I'd like to hear from the owner, what you envision being built there. Your attorney has, had made it clear to the audience. State your name again, please.
My name's Don Dillingham and I appreciate the opportunity to, to talk to you this evening about this. I can appreciate what these people are talking about as far as investment goes. I've already got, I think it's about $350,000 into the property. You know, what we're really trying to do, if you look at this area, it was developed, I think in the mid, early eighties, right when the oil bust happened. And the area that's zoned industrial is 100% occupied. The area that's zoned commercial is spotty at best. And really what we're trying to do is do what's located exactly right next door to our property. We'd love to get oilfields, some type of oilfield service and distribution in there. That's going to be the highest and best use, I believe, for the, for the property. And matter of fact, we are going to court the National Oilwell who has the property right next to ours. Rumor has it that they're needing room to expand. And the reason why we haven't put together a plan or anything like that is because without the zoning, these guys are not going to talk to you as far as that goes. So we really don't have anything to offer them until we find out, you know, if we can successfully get it res, the property rezoned.
Okay. Any questions here from the committee? Someone want to bring something up?
What does that, the other company, what do they do? They have light, heavy noise? What are they doing now?
You know, I'm glad you asked. I toured that plant or building. It's probably been about two, two and a half years ago. And it looked to be that they just had some parts in there. You know, they had a forklift, that was, but they didn't have, that was all they kind of had around. And these things are made of metal, so they're going to be heavy. But it looked to be, you know, parts.
Thank you.
So as part of your work, you envisioned part of this property having storage on the outside or would it all be under the roof?
I think it'll be exactly what's right next door. And the parts that they're going to, that like National Oilwell has, they're very valuable parts and they stay indoors. You know, you're not going to see anything where there, you're going to have a, any type of a yard, if you would. This would be, I envisioned this being indoor. You know, I envisioned this all being, you know, one tenant and having the whole thing either under roof or concreted.
So is it this, your proposed warehouse, would it take up this whole lot? I see there's a blue line down the middle of that square lot there. Is it divided in half or what?
Well, it's my understanding it was one piece property, but I don't know if there, that if it's formally split or not. I guess we made the application, there's two R2, two lots there. But you're, that's what you, you know, from, from talking to the guys that draw things professionally for a living, they say this thing probably sets up well for one, you know, tenant to come in there and put a, put a big building in and then have it just be, be one there, just because of how your setbacks and other stuff work.
So are you saying it would take up the whole piece of property?
Yes, sir. That's exactly what I, that's exactly what I'm saying.
The building?
Well, the building and, you know, as, as Mr. Ramey mentioned, you know, 20, 25,000 square foot building. This, this land's over 120,000 square feet. So you're going to use 20, 30% of it, it's kind of a guess, you know, as far as that goes. Would be under roof and then the balance would be your various setbacks and parking and all the, all the whatnot that would go into the, the building.
Okay. Mitchell, I have a question or maybe the attorney. If, if this, this body chooses to not approve this, these gentlemen can still go to the council for approval, is that correct?
That's correct. That's correct.
And then if the council chooses not to approve it, do they go to district court?
That I'm not 100% sure of. I would assume so, but I, I don't have the cookbook in front of me and I could find out quickly.
Yeah. But they do have recourse regardless of what this commission does?
Correct.
Just like if we voted to approve it, the council could vote to disapprove it?
Correct.
Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Peggy Cunningham, 674 Hamlet Lane. And I'm here simply as a resident. And I know you don't want to hear a repeat of what's already been said. I just want to say that I agree with Mr. Nail and Mr. Kelly on the, the access on Westport Boulevard and the safety issues. My, my new thing that I was going to ask you is whether the report that you are looking at is something that is public information. Is that something that we can access and see what's in the application? I simply don't know that. Is that something that we can see? Yes? If so, how do we get access to that? I thought maybe that would answer some of the questions that the residents have. Is right, you're saying, yes, that's something we can see?
That is something we can provide. You have to go through open records or come to our office and we can provide you copies of that information.
Okay. Okay, that might answer some of our questions.
That's, that's one of the reasons we try to give notice to the people within 300 feet so they can come to our office and look and see what the application actually says.
I think I'm further than 300 feet, so I didn't get the notice.
That's correct.
But that might answer a lot of our questions.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm Brian Filippone. I own A&amp;A Transmission, which would be south of, south of where they're going to be. And my big concern is, is number one, nobody's come by and talked to me. And number two is kind of what Mr. Kelly, I guess, said is, it seems like an open-ended book. I mean, I don't know, understand the traffic down the other street and I'd be concerned about that, too. But I'd just kind of like to know, just like this gentleman, I've spent a significant amount of money for my property and in fact, I'm in the middle of a negotiation for building another building on the other half of my property, of which we've been talking with Mitchell. And, and so I just really am concerned about, you know, are we talking distribution? As you said, Larry, as in oil? Or are we talking about heavy equipment running up and down the street? So that would be my concern and, and you know, and now I'm a business owner, not a resident. So I would be concerned about that.
I don't know if there's any way that the traffic could be diverted to that 17th street that, for that property. I don't know. That seems to be one of the things of people driving up and down Westport Boulevard. Yes, ma'am? Come right up, state your name.
Carol Compton, 681 Hamlet. I wanted to ask if this is the man who actually owns the property? And if he does, did he buy it when it was zoned commercial? So if he did, he already knew, just like we knew, it's already zoned commercial. And so if he wants to have industrial, he could buy industrial land. So, and he could sell it. If you change it to industrial, then he can sell it as industrial to whomever. And his plans go right down the drain. Do you own the land?
Yes, I own the land.
And when did you buy the land?
I got that land as a work out of a financial transaction, so it was a way to collect the debt.
And when was that?
It was back in '07.
Okay, so you knew it was, you knew how it was zoned already. So you could have prepared a use for it other than industrial.
And that's what we're here today to get this thing zoned to match the, that's the highest investment used to property and the, and the use that continues to land it on.
Okay. Sort of answered the question.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Anybody on the commission care to make a motion on this? We have the draft motion drawn up. If it's read, then we either vote yes or no. These gentlemen have paid their money and they, they deserve an up or down vote.
I'd like a little more discussion.
Okay.
I went out there this afternoon and there is quite nice. And I kind of have a habit of standing on a corner and imagining something out there. And all this is clean. It doesn't look like any of the industrial things. A&amp;A Transmission, for example, really has a nice new building out there that they just built. All the other places there. And I have a real concern about industrial zoning on this property.
Okay. Is, you just, you just want to make a statement or you got anything you want to discuss?
Have, have we heard from everybody?
That hasn't, that, other than the same points over and there's no use hearing those again.
Well, there's a church.
Yeah, come on up.
You bring up a good point.
You bring up a good point there, is, and I don't know that this would change if, if you had changed the zoning, but, you know, one of the other, being where I'm at now and getting ready to do a second building, is the requirements there are either brick, stone, you know, concrete, in other words, nice, as you point out. Will that requirement change and can they put up just a metal building?
Mr. Chairman, he's talking about the restrictive covenants for that development have specific requirements in the construction of the building, architectural.
So either it doesn't matter, commercial or industrial, they still have those restrictions?
Those restrictions are in there. I don't know if it's specific to lots or whatever, but that's something that we don't enforce. Now, our ordinance does require anything that faces onto a public street, that's 75% of that will be something other than metal.
Right, right. We went through that when we built mine, but then the requirement was, needed to be all brick to rock, just like those around me, and I just was curious, if they do get a change, will that change the appearance of that area?
Yeah, he's talking about the restricted covenants.
Yeah.
Yes, the transmission shop is in the same addition, under the same protective or restrictive covenants as this property in question, and he's I-1, and we have the same covenants, so we'd be subject to the same restrictions.
That corner you're talking about, sir, is anything but industrial, it's high-end residential. It's high-end residential. And industrial would be within a rock throw of that.
Which corner are we talking about, John?
Excuse me? That, Westport Boulevard and Commerce Street?
Okay.
And where, where the athletic workout facility is?
Yeah.
Just a few yards past that's where the industrial starts?
Yeah.
But that's, that's a beautiful residential street, Westport Boulevard, to a beautiful neighborhood, Westport, they keep that up fantastic, and you've got Stone Creek.
Right.
You've got a big time blessing of two neighborhoods for our community that are anything but industrial. So keep that in mind.
I know it's, as a Realtor, I understand where you're all coming from, but it's always, it's always a chance that when you buy a piece of property, it backs up to a piece of vacant land, you, you take your chances, a lot of times, that what can be done.
Yes, sir, I, I know that, but that was commercial, light commercial, now we want to go to light industrial, so we knew it was commercial. And we're open to commercial, but not light industrial. But we, we knew that.
Okay. All right. Have we exhausted this? Are we ready to move forward? Okay. Do we have a motion? On, can we get a motion on the floor?
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm going to move that the, this item be denied. Do I need to re, read this draft motion?
Uh...
In order to do that?
Mr. Attorney?
No, you don't have to read the draft motion, you can just make a motion to deny the rezoning application.
Well, I see the, I see the logic of the, the way this whole block's been zoned and that the east end is commercial and the west end is industrial, and I see, I see why it was done that way, so I will move that this item be denied.
I will second.
Motion and second. Any other discussion among the commissioners? Call the roll, please.
Chairman Taylor?
I want to vote no.
Vice Chair Doggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Smynstraw?
Yes.
Commissioner Beaver?
Yes.
Okay, that's denied, you can take it to the council if you wish. And you'd see Mitchell about getting on that agenda. Thank you. I appreciate the comments and the way everybody handled the meeting, great, thank you. All right. Item four, consideration of an application by Larry Russell, Larry Russell Homes, for a circular driveway curb cut on Lot 8, all of Block, of Lot 9, Block 11, Section 3, Kings Ridge Edition, also known as 1312 Canterbury Drive.
I'm Larry Russell, and I'm just requesting to, like I said, put a circle driveway like we've done for years out there, I guess there's been new ordinance change, where we have to come in and turn in for, to get that approved.
Are you, did you split a lot there and got a lot in half?
On that one, but I'm, well, we'll wait till the next one, we're doing another one, too, that's just on a regular lot. They're telling us that we have to get permission to do any circle driveway now, so...
Okay. Commissioners, have any questions?
I drove the area this afternoon and there's several circle drives out there, they all look really well, I think fit in with the neighborhood.
Yeah, and we're not, and one of them is on, well, I'm just going to bring this up because the, the next item is for another one, and it's on a corner lot. I mean, we know that we can't get too close to the corner, you know, we have to stay back off the center line and we're not asking for anything out of the ordinary, we're just, the basic, especially the first one that we're talking about, it's in the center of the addition, just for a basic circle driveway.
Okay, do we have any questions, or are we ready for the motion?
I move that in the case of the request by Larry Russell Homes to construct a circular driveway and new curb cuts at 1312 Canterbury Drive, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing, we find ourselves in agreement with the staff findings, including all plans and attachments cited in the staff report. I move that the item be approved.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Beaver?
Yes.
Commissioner Smynstraw?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Doggett?
Yes.
Chairman Taylor?
Yes. And the next one is another, let me read it. Item five, consideration of an application by Larry Russell, Larry Russell Homes, for a circular driveway curb cut on Lot 12, Block 3, Section 3, Kings Ridge Edition, also known as 1145 Canterbury Drive. This is that property just north of the entrance there on the, off of Vandemit, isn't it?
Yes, sir, it'd be the northwest corner.
Northwest corner, yeah. Okay.
And the, and the circle will be on, on Canterbury, on the, not on the side street, not on the main Kingsway.
So, they will, they can have a circle drive in the front, but they'll access their garage from the side street?
Yes, sir.
Anybody care to make a motion on that?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. In the case of the request by Larry Russell Homes to construct a circular driveway and new curbs cut at 1145 Canterbury Drive, we have read the staff report and received testimony at the public hearing, we find ourselves in agreement with staff findings, including all plans and attachments cited in the staff reports. I move that this item be approved.
Okay, we have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Motion and second, is there further discussion? Call the roll, please.
Chairman Taylor?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Doggett?
Yes.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes.
Commissioner Smynstraw?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item six, new business?
We have no new business.
Open discussion, does staff have anything? Cindy?
Nope.
Mitchell? I'd like to congratulate our new mayor and vice mayor, Ken Smith is the mayor and Rick Opitz is the vice mayor. And we'd like to thank Councilman McCarron for coming up and observing tonight and supporting us. Appreciate you being here. Is there other open discussion? Anybody?
Happy graduation to all those seniors, I have a grandson that's one of them.
That comes up next Tuesday night.
Yes, sir.
Our next meeting's June 10th, meetings adjourned.